Okay, welcome back, everyone. Thank you for being here. We adjourned closed session. No action was taken. Were there any requests for public comment based on closed session?
Not at this time of day.
So, in that case, I will call the open meeting to order. And if everybody would please stand with me and join me in a place like this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, as I said previously, no action was taken in the closed session. So moving on, item D, Dr. Shaw, would you like to cover teleconference board meeting protocol, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Board President Tom Silva. We have a blended board meeting this evening. And what we do for public comment in our school district as we have done our throughout the pandemic is we've received public comment by email or during the meeting itself. And first, let me ask this because I do not think, Mrs. Bach, do we have any email public comment this evening?
We do not.
Okay, all right. So, so what will happen this evening is that we may have public comment pertaining to the board agenda this evening. And what we'll ask as the meeting progresses is if a member of the public who's participating by Zoom would please use the raised hand icon to make public comment for items on the agenda. And then, Mrs. Bach will let us know. And we will bring your public comment into the meeting at the right time. Public comment is limited to three minutes. And as we're going through the agenda, it is related to agenda items. I also wanted to share that because of our Zoom session tonight that when the board does take a vote, that the motion will be followed by a roll call vote. So those of the public who maybe or cannot view the meeting will be able to hear how the board voted. And then, because of the weather conditions, you never know what might happen. But if we do lose connectivity, the meeting will be delayed for five minutes and maybe a bit longer. And we do have backup plans if that storm comes back and we lose powers. We're going to work to keep going. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Board President Tom Silva.
Thank you. So moving on to item D, communication. First item up is 2020, 2021, first period interim report.
Yes, we, the board took action to approve the first period interim report. The information was sent to our Sacramento County Office of Education. And this is a letter that affirms that that was done. It does say that it appears that our district would meet the 3% unrestricted reserve. And it does also point out that our enrollment is projected to be flat, meaning not grow through 2022, '23. Please know that this is based on the first period interim report. And we now have the governor's proposal. So things, I think when it comes to the second interim, will probably change again. But again, this is a routine letter. And it also has some information about, as we work with unions, if there are some agreements related to salary over time that we do need to work with our county office before those agreements can move fully through, be approved by you with county review as well. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now on to reports.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so LCAP 1, item 1, Reach for the Upside Initiative Podcast.
All right. Yes, and I am also going to ask that our Director of Curriculum Claudia Del Toro Ambriano help me, support me with this update because she was very involved with this as well. First of all, I love the name of this initiative, Reach for the Upside, because it really is a very positive initiative. And I have to say that I'm very proud that we were contacted to be, as we were selected as one of 30 districts in Northern California, to be considered for the Reach to the Upside Initiative that is funded by Genetech and also Stanford's Hasso Plattner Institute of Design. I, again, the rigorous process that they took to identify the districts. When they talked to me about inviting us to proceed, it was just, it was very emotional to hear because they really understood what this district has been doing over time and how it has been, you know, what has been paying off for children in the long run. So Cleo, I'd like to turn it to you in terms of just, where are we with this right now? And things that you, because I know that we had another staff member that helped on this also.
Yes, Jennifer Collier assisted with the completion and submission of the application. If we are selected as one of these grant districts, then we would be notified by next week. It was exciting, as Karen already said, because they started the meeting by saying that all the districts that were invited had a track record of doing great things for children. So it was very validating to hear that someone from the outside is recognizing the hard work that our staff are doing. So we're excited. We're hoping that we are selected. It would involve coaching and training with staff from Stanford. We have a team that has been selected. We would do the coaching and training for seven weeks, once a week for seven weeks. And the focus would be to find possible solutions to whatever barriers we identified holding either instruction academics or children back. So we're, we'll keep it posted. And we hope to be one of the districts selected.
Maybe 12, 12, I think that they need fund 12. So, and it may be something that would help as part of our LCAP process too, in terms of just some focus. So, yeah, yeah. And again, thank you, Director of Curriculum, for your leadership with this as well as Jennifer Collier. And, and again, know that our, our district committees also had provided some ideas and others too. So we'll see what they do.
We'll keep it posted.
Well, excellent. That is, that is definitely good news. And I think you're right, it is validation. So it's always nice to hear that. That is awesome. Moving on, LCAP 2, item number 1, reopening schools and governor's budget updates discussion.
Okay. Well, here's our journey. We have gone through quite a process of developing a transitional model that looks at how we move from distance learning to on-campus learning over time, really paying attention to safety precautions and for us to be systems ready to be able to do that. And we have done that with direction from you. We've also done that with hard work from both our teachers' union and our classified union to prepare us so that aligned with what we said is a district and with public health, that we would look to reopen on red. The good news, well, things are better. And we're still in purple, but we're getting closer to red. And, you know, we think that it's on the horizon. And, and you know, possibly later in February or March, we may be, maybe ready to go on that. Now, what has happened is that the governor has come out with a proposal that provides some incentive funding along with some other things to think about, along with some state guidance for public health. And what I'd like to start by saying is that we're doing everything we can to position this district to be able to reopen and to maximize, to maximize the resources to be able to do that. So that's what we'd like to do in this report for you. And then, open it to your, for discussion and direction and possibly public comment around this too, is to start with some information concerning, and I know, Mrs. Bach, if you could please pull up the presentation, and our board does have this in with you, it's a PowerPoint. Took some of the things that we pulled and kind of consolidated it into when. But we'd like to provide you with some information about the governor's budget proposal, then the California Department of Public Health Guidance, along with our learning continuity efforts. Then we have outlined some next steps to review with you. And then, turn it to you for board discussion and direction. And there may be some public comment that comes into play as well as we're going through this. So, looks like we've got the presentation up. And the next slide, Mrs. Bach, was the one that I just did the outline. And so I'm going to turn this to our Director of Business Services, Lois Yon.
All right, thank you. Well, this January budget proposal was sure tapped. They said everything in the kitchen sink. So there's a lot of slides here. Some of them, I will go over quickly. Some will just be some quick highlights. I'll spend a little more time on the budget that actually impacts education. So some will just be really quick. And Koi, I think you can probably just, you'll be able to just scroll through as I'm going. And I know you have it in front of you. So just real quick, some highlights for this budget this year. Definitely focusing on the pandemic. We're seeing investments to protect small businesses, job creation packages, access to healthcare housing and education. And definitely, the governor is still looking to beef up the reserve in this budget as well. The education budget, there's lots to celebrate in this proposal. Definitely more funding for education than we had thought. There's funds, some of the things that we'll highlight will be funds for mental health, early childhood education, special education, and educator investments. Those are some proposals that we've heard of in the past, and they are back. Hopefully, they will stick this time. Some of the impacts on our districts that we will see with this budget, we will talk a little about the multi-year projections. We'll talk about the cost of living adjustment that's proposed. We'll talk about cash flow and deferrals. So looking at why there's more money in this budget than what we had anticipated, especially with this pandemic, was the personal income tax. Personal income tax, even though through the two times we've been going through, is up by 5%. And that income tax is really what feeds education budget. The general fund budget for the state has a hefty reserve, up to $16 billion with this proposal, which is 10% of state revenues and reserves. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, why that is so important coming up the next couple of years that we have that rainy day fund at $16 billion. While things look good right now, they are warning us of some shortfalls. And we'll talk a little bit more about this and why. You can see, we have a surplus right now in '21, '22 of $15 billion. But as soon as '22, '23, we are expecting shortfalls. And for the next few years out. Let's look a little, look at the education budget. Prop 98 is definitely up. That's the minimum funding guarantee for education. You can see how it's gone up over the years. But it's at $85.8 billion for '21, '22. That's where this extra funding is coming to us. Deferrals, while this budget does pay down some of the deferrals, it does not pay down the deferrals for this year for February through June. So we are still anticipating basically IOUs from the state. So it is a good thing that the board did approve a TRAN. We're hoping, there's a good chance we might not need to take the TRAN out if some of the federal emergency funding starts coming in within the next couple of months. So we're in place if we have to take it. We're hoping with this extra federal money, we won't. But this budget does do away with the deferrals for February and May of 2022. So hopefully, it will just be this year that we will have deferrals. Great news that there's COLA in this budget at 3.84%. That will really help us. The cost of living, you know, we're at zero right now, so three, almost 4%. And the next slide shows you what that does for our base ADA. The second column there shows you that with that COLA per ADA, it goes up $300 to almost $400 per student, what that COLA does for us. We are hearing to expect more accountability in the area of supplemental and concentration funding. That's our funding that we receive for English learners, students receiving free interviews lunch and foster students. The governor is proposing that the counties will implement new guidelines on accountability for those funds. So we'll see, that would most likely come through the LCAP process. More information coming with that. There's a proposal of funding for TK, Traditional Kinder and Full Day Kinder Incentives. It could be for instructional supports and even facilities. So that's good to see, over $250 million. We're seeing some proposals for special education. Special education is only going to receive the 1.5% COLA. They're not going to receive the full 3.84%. We're also seeing back for special education, the Early Intervention Grant that we received, I think it was last year. And that funding is based on the amount of preschool students who have receiving special education services. So that would be a nice welcome back. And then, there's a few other small pots of money for special education, really related to professional learning and guidance for medical billing. Great news, $450 million possibly for mental health. 400, sorry, $540 million for educator professional development. They're, what the governor is calling the teacher pipeline. These funds can help support teachers that are committed to teaching in high-needs fields, especially special education, bilingual education and STEM. And also, this funding would help classified staff who are wanting to become teachers. What's not in the budget, COVID-19 liability coverage for districts. Keeping districts whole harmless for the number of students that they've lost receiving free reduced lunches. Additional CalSTRS and CalPERS employer rate reduction and more discretionary dollars. While there's more dollars, most of the dollars are tied up in restrictive programs that will have more strings attached. We're just going to quickly highlight the pandemic funding, the future of that. With the $2.3 trillion stimulus bill that passed, approximately $82 billion will go to education. And so you can see there on the next slide, I believe, Koi, where it shows us the ESAR fund, that's the Elementary-Secondary School Emergency Funds. Most of that's going there, $54 billion. An estimate for us to receive for elementary would be about $3.5 million in emergency funds. We are hoping that we would start receiving some of those funds as early as March. That's what would help us not need the loans, the TRANs, if those funds start to come in. Also, the governor is calling for an emergency approval, $2 billion for the funding to reopen schools. You can see there, if your school, if your district can open in February, you could possibly receive 450 per student if March, $337 per student. There are strings attached with that. It's very controversial right now. We are anticipating big changes with this proposal. Some of the things that you need to have on the next slide, Koi, to receive these funds is a COVID-19 safety plan, labor agreements, MOUs on how that plan would be implemented, offering in-person instruction by either February 16th or March 15th, and then COVID testing. There's also a quite a large proposal of $4.6 billion in proposed expanded learning time and academic intervention grants. There's very few details with this at this time, but it would be focusing on extending your school year or possibly providing summer services for low-income students, high-risk foster English learners. So we'll see how that plays out the next couple of months. I want to talk a little bit about the cliff that we're, in that slide there. Koi, the cliff that they are warning us about. They are expecting revenues to decrease at the state by '22, '23. And also, there is a big possible ADA cliff for us, that is average daily attendance. Right now, we are funded on our 19, 20 enrollment. Currently, our enrollment is down by over 200 students. That equates to about $2 million for us. And so, when we get to '22, '23, that will be the year that we will be actually funded on our current enrollment. So if we don't start growing with kids, we could be seeing quite a decrease in funding '22, '23. And that's also the year that they're expecting state revenues to be down. So that is a big cliff, is what they're calling it. Over to the next, I'll go ahead, I'll skip that one. I've talked a lot about cash flow and deferrals already, Koi, we can go to reserve. Reserves are so important. Our reserve at first interim was 9%. And the state, the average right now for elementary school districts, or at least at 18, 19, was 20%. So we're at nine. It is, it's good that we are increasing, that we're not at that minimum of three, but it's going to be so important these next couple of years. And the next slide talks a little bit about that. Current state financial projections show a deficit beginning in '22, '23. They're saying the public school system stabilization account balance will not last long. And LEAs with higher reserves are better equipped to protect the community they serve. Last couple of slides, collective bargaining. Well, yes, it's, it's great if we receive that 3.84%, but then this just kind of shows where that goes. The increases to districts every year for step and column is about 1.5%. Health and welfare benefits is .5. And then, CalPERS employer contribution will be going up again, and that will be over 2%. And I think our last side, our last slide is just a reminder on layoff restrictions. We do have some restrictions. There's some protected classified groups that you cannot lay off anytime before June 30th. Those are our custodians, our transportation staff and food service, nutrition department. And then, for certificated, it's the March layoff process. That has not changed. So I know it's a lot of information. I think I cut down about 150 slides to maybe three. But a lot, they're just, they say what we do know is a lot will change at the Capitol between now and when this budget is actually adopted in June. We will start having trailer billing, which come out within the next few weeks. And a few of these are urgent, that the governor is trying to push through, especially the federal funding piece and the initiative, the funding to extend the school year or provide summer services, trying to push that through quickly. Because some of those timelines are, that's why again, we, we would project that there may be changes in some of those timelines with the urgent types of things that the governor's bringing forward, but it may change, yes. Any questions?
That was a lot.
It's a lot.
Obviously, there's some optimism in there. Things, you know, we need to be concerned about too. I was really happy just to see the COLA reinstated. I thought it was kind of ridiculous to factor that out in the first place. Because that's just an economic reality. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and as we continue with this report, we not only had new information about the governor's proposal, but then we also received new information from state-county public health. So there is a slide that Koi will bring up, and Donna Whitlock was going to review that. And then, Claudia Del Toro Ambriano will go into the learning continuity. Okay. And then we'll wrap it up with next steps.
Okay. I think you have a copy of this in our board packet. It's the consolidated schools. It's the new guidance that just came out on January 14th from California for All and the California Department of Public Health. And it's important to know that this guidance updates all the requirements and the previous, previous guidance required for in-person instruction. It also supersedes all previous guidance. This new document does. The only guidance that doesn't supersede is the guidance for our small group cohorts that we currently have in place. And in this guidance, it's providing guidance to schools for districts that are currently, currently open for in-person instruction. It's giving us guidance on reopening on, in the red tier. And that's for districts K-12. There's some, there's some other guidance in here you may have read, or if you're a district that K-6 schools, there's some guidance about the purple tier, but for our district and what we've worked on, we're looking at that red tier. And so, what I wanted to bring to your attention in that plan is that the new guidance from California is that in order to open on the red tier, school districts need to have two plans in place. It's called a COVID Safety Plan. And I have, I think you have one of them, the checklist. You have a template for the school guidance checklist in your packet. Well, the school, the COVID Safety Plan is comprised of the COVID-19 Prevention Program that Lois and her department worked on. And this is employee guidance. It gives us systems for communicating, identification of COVID hazards, the investigating and responding to COVID cases, health and safety, recording and record keeping. And this is temporary, these temporary standards just went into place January 1st. And so, it's something that all of our, you know, all of our schools and our districts have to follow the new guidance documents. So they worked really, really hard on this right during the break before January. So we do have this document in place. That's one of the criteria that we need to have. The second one is the COVID School Guidance Checklist, and you have the template in your packet. And luckily, the template that you see, that checklist, it's also addressed in that staff and students, the health and safety guidance that we've looked at in the past. And I'll just really quickly just, you know, touch on a few of the areas. But in this guidance document, we need to show the following, that, you know, how we're prepared to open up with stable groups. How our students are going for entry, egress and movement, how we're going to have our students move safely throughout the school. The guidelines for face coverings and other personal protective equipment. Daily health screenings, which we have started to put in place. We have daily health screenings for our staff coming onto campus. When we return to in-person instruction, all of our students and all of our staff will be reporting through a daily health screening. They have on, it's a frontline. It'll be an app on their phone. The healthy hygiene practices and tracing. We have our district nurse, our contracted nurse, Marty Cuevas Ortega. She's our district COVID tracer. She works very closely with the Sacramento County Office of the Public Health. And so, we have that in place. Physical distance, physical distancing, you saw in the template. We need to make sure, and PBK, Lois worked with them to go through every classroom in every school to make sure that we would be able to physically distance by at least minimum six feet, all of our students. And I believe the maximum capacity for our classrooms will be 16, 16 students. And then, of course, the teacher on top of that. Staff training and family education. And we have on our website, we've done some presentations with parents. We've done some PowerPoints, and we've done some trainings with our staff. But we have to have all the staff training and parent, family education in place. The testing of staff and students. Currently, we are asking our staff to go for surveillance testing or asymptomatic testing once every two months. So every two weeks, a new cohort of staff get the notice. And we, it's provided free of cost at the Shaboya Center or another location in Sat County if they're closer. In the new reopening guidance, if you are in the red tier, they are requiring that you are able to they are requiring that you are able to provide the testing for all of your staff and all of your students once every two weeks. So that would be testing for students and staff every two weeks. And we are working, we were daily, we're working right now, we have, we've been working closely with City of Galt. Working on looking and seeing if we can expand testing. We're looking at Valencia Branch Laboratories through the state. That's who City of Galt is using and many other school districts all are. Karen and I were in a webinar today, looking at the possibility of opening an additional site. You know, possibly working with maybe the City of Galt to open up another day at Chaboya Center. But if we truly are going to need to be testing five hundred staff members, thirty five hundred students every two weeks, we may, we may may need to provide an additional one or two locations. But with our guidance from Sat County Public Health, our county office of education, and then working with City of Galt, that's what we are, we are working to do. City of Galt's been so supportive. And they are willing, and we in fact have talked to them, and they're working with the Sat County Public Health is perhaps we provide our staffing, we get our staff trained. We could use, for example, the Chaboya Center for an extra day. And then we would be able to do the self swap testing, but we would use their location because they are completely set up for it. So that's probably in the guidance checklist. It's the testing of staff and students that really are, we're going to need to drill down. All of the other guidance we've been working on since November, really making sure that we have the health and safety of our students and staff in place. Identification and reporting, again, Marty Cuevas is our contact tracer. And she works on that daily and on weekends if needed. It also, and the communication, and then finally, the consultation, not only with our bargaining teams, but with parents and our community. And we have, I think Karen had mentioned thirty one, you know, meetings with our with our.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking about cohorts.
Since, oh, since our bargaining team since August, they have been amazing. We almost on a weekly basis, we have come and communicating with not only our certificated teachers union, the classified. We have been meeting monthly with our district advisory committee, our district English learner advisory committee, and bimonthly with our special education. And then also with our community, with the city of Galt. So I feel really confident that with this checklist that we need to have in order to open, we must be in the red tier for five consecutive days before the school may reopen. As a part of our MOU with our certificated union, we will give them two weeks, two weeks notice, so we'll be in red. And this this guidance document and our prevention plan will need to be publicly posted on our homepage on our website at least five days to prior to our in-person instruction. So that our community will have that. Just really quickly, I talked about testing already, the testing cadence, what we were working on. The vaccine update is that we are also, we were prepared to, and City of Galt is prepared to work for us with us. They have the refrigeration. We just are working with Sat County Public Health County Office of Education to try to get the availability of the of the vaccines in order to start with our staff. It has not yet been approved for children under age sixteen. So at this time, our priority are our school employees. The last thing I wanted to report on is a new requirement that just came into play on Friday. And the report was due by five o'clock on Monday. It's the school reopen status reopening report. And what our state would really wants to know is how many students are are receiving a full-time in-person instruction? Are your students receiving part-time or hybrid, you know, like an AMP model instruction? Are they still on distance learning? And so every two weeks, every other Monday, I'm submitting a report to the state, letting them know our progress and where we're at in the reopening.
Any other, anything to add to that?
No, just again, the theme is we're working to reopen on red. Not quite in red yet. That that's our goal. You know, these guidelines are are a part from when Lois was talking about, you know, the additional funding for the governor. There's a few more strings attached and deadlines to meet. But these guidelines, whether we were able to get the funding or not, these guidelines are something we need to have in place in order to open. We're in a good place.
Okay, and so again, we talked about the governor's proposal. Which is new, and then we have revisions or additional things to think about with public health. And then it 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 also involves, you know, our efforts for learning continuity and where things are for learning supports for our children. So I'm going to transition to our director curriculum.
Before I start, I just want you to know that all of our staff are doing a phenomenal job. We still have celebrations, we still have classroom competitions, we still hold SST meetings, academic conferences have been held. Wednesday collaboration still takes place with our teachers, but everything just looks a little different because of of distance learning. To be able to share our priorities and considerations at this time, I would like to give you some background information. At the end of last November, we asked Advent to submit data on various areas, and the data showed that we were making progress in early reading, but the progress and the growth is slow. I need you to know that. And also want you to know that it is quite challenging to teach SIPs instruction remotely to the little ones. It's just, teachers are trying, our instructional assistants are trying, but it is difficult. And I can tell you that in the intermediate grades, we show small gains in both reading and math. Fifth grade appears to show slightly greater gains in the area of math. And I'm going to make a very general statement. So generally speaking, children that were doing fine before distance learning are still doing okay. They're probably a little further behind had we not been in distance learning. But for the most part, they're doing okay. Children that were struggling before distance learning. Those are the children that appear to have a wider achievement gap at this point. So there's a lot that we need to consider for next year for all children. But specifically for the ones that were already trying to catch up, and now they're much further behind. Want you to know that we had asked our administrative team to also share with us, you know, what caught their attention? How are they, you know, what things are they seeing? And our team did share that our ELD, our English Language Development support is on track. They also shared that students who receive special education services are meeting their IEP goals. They shared that a lack of engagement and lack of regular attendance is a concern for all schools. Again, I want you to know that staff is doing a phenomenal job. They did report that a lot of our staff members are hurting in the area of social emotional. They they're asking for social emotional support, just like the kids. So what the kids need, it appears that our staff also are needing that. And we think it's important to recognize again, that everything that staff knew worked doesn't quite work remotely. Everything that they had a small success for in the past that they knew for sure would work, doesn't quite work anymore. So they're feeling a little defeated because they're not seeing the success that they were used to seeing when the children were in front of them. So based on what we know at this point, state assessments are still on the calendar. I want you to know that LPAC assessment, that is the assessment given to all English learners. That window opens next month. Cast is the science test that we give to fifth and eighth grade. That starts in March. And then ASVAC, as you know, it's math and ELA given to all third through eighth grade. That starts in April and goes through May. The results are summative in nature, and we usually use them to compare the growth made within certain standards. As at the local level, you have heard us talk about map assessments, and we've shared with you map data reports before. It does help guide our instruction because it's more of a formative assessment. It also helps measure, of course, growth. We plan to administer the winter map once children return to us. There was a lot of discussion with our administrative team, and they of course have talks with our staff. And we felt that if we were going to obtain data, we wanted the data to be as valid as possible. And giving the test remotely, we weren't sure, you know, what to expect. And the thought of giving up instructional time and in return obtain data that maybe we weren't sure of. The thought was, why don't we just wait until the children are in front of us? And at that point, we can give the map assessment. Obviously, if we don't return soon enough for us to give the winter map, then we will just move forward with giving the spring map to all first and second grade students, since they don't take the state assessments. So based on this information, we currently have three areas of focus. So number one, we would like to continue to monitor local assessment data again, because that's the data that informs format of assessment, informs our instruction. We would like to identify resources to support staff and to provide a platform for district-wide collaboration. If you remember back in March, when we shared with you how wonderful it was to have so many teachers share what they were doing and what they were doing to understand distance learning better. I still hear about how great that professional development was. So the goal is to try to use our own expertise. You you have phenomenal teachers. But there's not always a platform for them to share best practices. So the goal is to try to do that. Regardless of how long we remain on distance learning and to continue to do that and grow in that direction even after this year. We also, number three, we would like to use the data to address the learning loss by doing three things. We would like to develop individual acceleration plans late in the spring. And that title can change, but for now, we're calling them acceleration plan. We're going to have to have an idea of what children know and what they don't. And we're going to have to adjust instruction in the fall. Because for the first time, we're going to have a large number of children coming into X grade with much of the learning not mastered. We always have children, right, every year that come not quite ready for the grade. But this coming year will be the first time that where I think I'm expecting a large number of children truly not being ready for that level of rigor. So we're going to have to rethink what we do and how we do it to be able to address that. So right now, we're calling them again acceleration plans. And again, the goal is to have those in the late spring. Because another way that we are thinking about addressing the learning loss is by identifying ways to extend the learning time either in June or in August. And I like the word that Lois used earlier, one of the slides said expanded learning. I was calling it extended learning. So either way, it implies that children are going to need more time. So with the funding that we are expecting, we're hoping that we can create something again for the children that were already trying to catch up. Some kind of, you know, at the end of the year, we'll give them a two-week closure, or we give them a two-week jumpstart. And then the last, the last area that we're hoping to address the learning loss is by setting the social emotional learning as the foundation to create a pathway to more effectively address the academic or the, yeah, the academic growth. We're finding, and you already know, I mean, this is data that we have known for years. Children that have a stronger relationship with children tend to grow more. They tend to come to school more often, they tend to be happier, they tend to give us produced better work. So then we have to understand that that social emotional piece has to be the foundation from where we build, right? That the academic power we've been calling man. And so that's pretty much the three areas, that continue to monitor the local data that we see, identify resources for teachers and create a platform for collaboration. And then rethink, you know, how are we going to address the the learning loss? And hopefully, again, the acceleration plans identify ways to extend the learning and then making sure that that social emotional foundation is what we built on.
So it's not only, you know, again, it's, okay, we have, we we are really prioritizing to make sure that we are looking at reopening in red, that we are, we are have our safety precautions in place, that we're we're consistent as a district, that we're getting systems ready that way. That we're we're working to position ourselves to maximize what the budget can be with you as our board of trustees. But we never lose sight of the learning. We never, never do that. And I think what our director curriculum is bringing forward is just the efforts to do the best we can right now. But also what we're going to need to do when we're looking at acceleration, given just the situation, you know, that we've been living for quite some time. So so with that, with that, that's why this this concept of learning continuity is really, really important. And and what the governor is proposing and with the budget that we'll end up with, how we use those resources and how we conduct amidst of that testing and vaccines as soon as we can, it's just an amazing time. So here are some next stats that I would like to quickly review with you. And then I do believe that we have one public comment at this point too, and we'll see their questions are more or discussion is that.
Karen, this is Grace, can I, I I have a question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay. And with discussing, you know, the social emotional aspects and along with academics with our students, I know that there's been small cohorts on campus, some campuses. And then I know that like after school programs, there's been some small cohorts, at least at the middle school level. And that is boosting that social and emotional. You know, getting the students back on campus and just, it's, I I've seen the difference with that at the middle school level. But I'm curious about the elementary school, because I have not heard if there is champions maybe on campus, if they're going to do small cohorts, or if you've spoken with the City of Galt about getting SOAR on campus after school?
Yes, may I start? And then I, this is Karen, Gracie. And then, and then I will transition here to Donna. Is is first of all, we know that we do provide cohorts, we do have cohorts at every school right now. We have grown to provide over forty one. So the last time we have reported, we were over thirty, we're now over, we have forty one cohorts at this time. And what we're working to do is I transition this to our director of educational services is we want to have, you know, what you're, what you're giving, what examples you are stating such as SOAR or ACEs. These are like expanded learning opportunities. We want to have those not only through distance learning, but be able to transition with whatever model we have. So Donna, would you talk more about that?
Maybe just a little bit of an update for ACEs. We have ACEs cohorts, small cohorts of students at Valley Oaks, Greer and McCaffrey. At Lake Canyon now, and we're planning for Marengo, utilizing their BFLCs. We're planning on starting also an additional cohort at each of those schools. Kind of like a study group for students who need that social emotional and need that connection on campus. A lot of it, so we're working that way, and then we'll work with River Oaks as well. As far as with City of Galt and looking at SOAR, our extended learning supervisor Jennifer Collier is in the process of calling all of the parents from the survey that was done earlier in the fall and indicated. There was quite a few indicated they needed childcare, and we're doing a needs, kind of looking at needs. What, when, when are we going to need that, or will families need the childcare? Is it in the morning, is it after ten thirty when the children leave, is it for the afternoon? City of Galt said that once they know the need, that they are prepared to support with SOAR. So they are prepared to support with SOAR. The schools that do not have SOAR, we are working on expanding ACEs. Instead of having it as an after-school program, most likely it would be in the afternoon to support families who need that additional care. And as far as I know, I believe Champions has opened back up at Marengo Ranch. They have or they're planning to at Marengo to provide the childcare. And their childcare will be before, during and after school.
The individual calls that staff are making right now to. The individual calls that staff are making right now to parents who said that they wanted services such as this. Isn't that what's helping us determine and work with City of Galt on soar to find out, okay, with the A M P M model? That we're preparing to reopen to when we're in red. That we're trying to discern if parents want that support during the A M P M schedule, or do they want it still like after four o'clock? So the parents who indicated that interest. We're we're getting that information because that's what City of Galt needs to have also. So when they're looking to hire, they're trying to figure out, okay, if there's really not a need for it in the morning. But there is in the afternoon, maybe they won't do an evening soar. They'll do an afternoon one while we're in an A M P M model. But we don't want to set that up if there's not the need.
No, so that's why under the process, we've started with the families who have indicated through that survey that they would need childcare. And then we can expand it. The one other area that I'm really excited about that Jennifer is working on is that we. Are going to provide childcare or homework club care for all of our staff members who have children. For example, they'll have elementary and middle school students are in the A M P M cohort and they're working. So for example, my child, I'm, you know, I'm an employee, my child might be in the A M cohort and gets out at. At forty, but we will have childcare or club care for those staff members' children. For the second part of the day. And we had initially fourteen or fifteen staff members, but we just did an all call this week. Open it up to make sure that we're able to support all of our staff childcare needs.
All right. Thank you so much for that update.
Hey. All right. And you know what I just thought about to publicly with our board in open session is just this aspect of services and transportation. So I'm just thinking to you, not only our board, but those who may be listening tonight.
So we have, Transportation Department has been able to route. All of our students based on their A M or P M schedule for all of the parents that have requested transportation. So with the survey that went out. There was a, one of the surveys, they were able to indicate if they needed transportation. And then we've had a lot of families that have called Transportation Department or the school offices. And so we've got. About a hundred and fifty students that are routed right now. So everyone's covered that has requested transportation at this time. And we do have some spots mainly in the P M. Class after school P M, but so far we're able to meet the needs of transportation.
That's good news. And so the next steps. That Koi has up on our our screen here and that you have, you may have in front of you is that. This gives you a feel for some of the efforts that are going on this month. And the thought was perhaps we would have already been in red. And so that's why I was somewhat ambitious about what we might be doing next week. Well, we'll see. But again, one of the things that we're going to launch sooner than later. Is we have a safety commitment form that our employees have. Taken the time to complete. That same form has been adapted for families. And we want to make sure that we're in red before we send this to families. That's why again, if we're not in red next week, we may. Till after next week, but that safety commitment form and to get them ready with the priest, the daily screening tool. It's, you know, on the phone that employees are using that they would use for their children. We're working to roll that out in early February so that we're ready when we reopen on red. We will continue efforts with both of our unions to prepare. And then the checklist that Donna Whitlock had talked about, this is a new. Requirement that's out there. We're working to complete that in early February. Along with the safety plan and some of these things, as Donna was saying, we have safety plans. We've rolled it out. They're up on our website. So some of these things that we're being asked to do on a different form is somewhat of a formality. It's a matter of cutting and pasting what we already have. The safety booklet that you have in your packet that we've sent to families, it's cutting and pasting some of that into these new checklists. If that makes sense. And the week of February eighth, we have our three district committees that will be convening again, and it will be helpful for us to talk about the rollout and. And help them get feedback from them in terms of what we can do to really roll things out right. And effectively. And then again, we will be looking at that transition to a blended learning model. Which is an A M P M model. And that we would have ongoing, we already have free COVID testing for employees. But as Donna Whitlock was saying, that the state requirements now also include students and more frequently. So we're working to get that in place. And publicly to you, I'll say we are looking at a state company called Valencia to help us to do that. That already is an organization or agency that the City of Galt is working with as well. And we think that that will be a good approach to. To be able to do that. And we are preparing and. As soon as we can get those vaccinations going in the Sacramento region. And we're gonna get that going. We want to have a center in Galt to do it. If we don't do it at our school sites. I do not have any timelines or dates to share with you about that. I just want you to know just a lot is going on to prepare for that. And that, again, as as Lois Yott was sharing, there is a proposal. With some urgency areas that could come up sooner than when the budget, when the budget is approved by the governor. But part of what the governor is proposing may change, but we're working to get in position so that if, you know, if we're open on red. And, you know, we're we're ready to go. We can be eligible funding for funding. We want to do it. But I think more importantly. We want to be able to reopen, reopen safely, reopen on red. And reopen in an A M P M model. We've got transportation down. We're getting childcare lined up. We've got learning continuity matters. We have eighty teachers in our district who have said that they want to try new technology. So that, you know, they can support continuity of learning. And later on, you have an agreement pertaining to that as well to consider. So that's some, that's some traction on reopening, challenges, but lots of traction. So back to you, Board President and Board.
And you said that we did have a public comment?
We actually have to leave at this time regarding the opening.
Okay, um. First, let me put it out to the board though, because you have any question or comment before, before then we transition. So go ahead, Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, just so that we can try to hopefully answer as many questions as we can for, you know, the public at home. Would the testing be mandatory? Or is it offered for students? You know, I think that's probably a big question going through people's minds right now.
Yep.
And then also for the staff, is it mandatory or is it suggested?
Yes, yes. And 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 again, we know that there are things that the governor is proposing that are not for sure right now. We do have the guidance that Donna Whitlock shared around those areas. So we're preparing. For it as something that we have to demonstrate that we're able to do it. And that we would provide it for employees and for students. But again, that requirement, that is the part where we don't understand it to be a requirement.
And then for the vaccine as well, would that be something, obviously, you know, not for the students at our age group.
Yes.
But for the staff, would it be?
And that is our understanding with that as well at this time, unless that were to change is that, you know, again, we want to be able to provide it. We want to be able to provide it in Galt. We want all of our employees to know that they can get it and how to get it. And it's not gonna cost anything, but we don't understand it to be a requirement. That's our understanding at this time.
And I think one last question, just, you know, as a parent. So if you. Maybe could make the A M P M schedule work as far as, you know, getting your kids to school or whatever, and you choose to stay on distance learning. Are you gonna have the option to, when you're able to get your kids back? You know, if you were on the distance learning, would you be able to switch? Or is there kind of a commitment that you have to make?
Yeah. Well, and I'll back up. The first time that we did that was with the Glee program that started last August. And with that program, we said, you know, if your if your child is in that, that your child will be in there for the year.
Yeah.
And and then this, I'm gonna start it, Dawn, I'm gonna segue you on this, is that, you know, we we hire staff based on need. And so, you know, it's like, I think it has to do with space too, in terms of whether it's kind of a case by case, you know, whether we would bring.
It has to do with space and we, so we offered to all families the option of, it's called Glee two point O. Those families who at this time said that they just felt they could not, would not bring their child for other reasons, you know, back onto campus. So we have two hundred and eight students. That are going to be continuing on distance learning in addition to the original one hundred and sixty seven. Those kids will be staying on distance learning. The expectation is that they will remain on distance learning until the end of the year, but it will be on a case by case basis. Also, we do know that.
Meaning that on case by case, so we say the child starts it now and they have a Glee, they're they're not at school. And now it's the end of April.
And it would depend on, it would be on case by case if there's space in the classroom. But the parents, when they signed the agreement, they did know it was the expectation till the end of the school year. It would be also, conversely, if. If we have space in the Glee two point O, if we have space in the program and we have a family. We have several families on the waiting list if they say that they just feel they can't come, you know, can't send their children back to school. If we have space either in the first Glee or the second Glee program, we will accommodate those families as well. And they have been calling their their school sites and letting their the administrator know if they've, you know, have some late. Late parents that have asked for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, well then, I guess at this time we'll go ahead and transition over to public comment.
Okay, and public comment, I believe that we have three public comments related to reopening schools. And just again, for our speakers, Mrs. Bach will introduce you. And then we have, we will ask that you limit your public comment to three minutes. And when there's about thirty seconds left, we'll let you know and so that you can wrap up your your public comment. And again, public comment is just that. It's comment for our our board to hear. It is not a town hall type of public comment where. We're engaging in question and answering, but it is an opportunity for you to to comment on reopening as the topic. Thank you. And Mrs. Bach?
Yes, our first public comment is from Annette Kuhn. Annette, can you direct?
Yes, before I begin, I just want to make a technical comment. People are being asked in the chat what item they want to comment on, but the chat function is disabled. So we're not able to respond. So hopefully those same three people are the same people I was talking to as well, but. Just to let you know that we haven't been able to respond in the chat that to which item, but. At any rate, so I'll, and now I'll go ahead and begin my comment. And one point of clarification in the new guidelines, K through six can open in the purple tier if they're less than twenty five. Case rate and as of today, it's twenty eight. So at this trend should be at twenty five by next week. So I'm not sure why we're still focused on the red tier. I would definitely suggest you consider the purple tier. So I am here on behalf of my family and also several citizens, which I'll explain in a second. First, to set the stage, I'd like to read a couple of excerpts from the California School Boards Association document called School Board Leadership. You may be familiar, but I just want to make sure it's fresh in everyone's mind. Here it goes. As the only locally elected officials chosen solely to represent the interests of school children. Let me repeat that solely to represent the interests of school children. Board members also have a responsibility to speak out on behalf of those children. Here's another excerpt. Why do we have school boards? Citizen oversight of local government is the cornerstone of democracy in the United States. It's a foundation that has lasted through turbulent centuries since our nation came into being. In their book Time for Curriculum, the authors note that we use citizen control for cities, counties, states, region and the nation. We use it for sewers, police, roads, firefighting, et cetera. All, every government function and all governed by civilians. Now I'd like to read a petition that has been signed by almost a hundred and eighty individuals in a little over a week. And is a great representation of the voice of those civilians. We are deeply concerned about the state of education in Galt. We care sincerely about the children and teens in our community. Who deserve nothing less than a high quality education. Paramount to a high quality education is in person instruction where teachers can gauge students' needs more accurately and interact with them more genuinely. Our youth by nature are hands on learners who are being deprived daily of social and academic engagement. Further, education is not just about knowledge, but also about peer relationships, physical activity and emotional wellness that nourish them as a whole person. We sign this petition earnestly as parents, family members, friends, citizens, students, faculties and or educators ourselves. Who want their voice to be heard on this critical matter. We are especially concerned about the long term damage to our Galt youth and for those who are struggling in the current educational environment or not thriving to their fullest potential. Specifically, we petition Galt educators and educational leaders to advocate on all fronts. For a return to in person learning as soon as possible. And to courageously break down any barriers prevent preventing it. We request innovative solutions and a continuous mindset of why not? So first, our request is to reopen as soon as possible, as much as possible. Study after study has shown there's little risk and the new guidelines allow that in the purple tier for K through six. Second, advocate relentlessly for the school children and education as your role requires. And escalate through every channel that you can. Third, be ready and do not engage in conversational circles, move forward and move forward much more actively. And you need to face that the education model is quickly crumbling. You do not want to bear that burden on your shoulders by not acting vigorously and resolute determination. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Margot Agwire.
I think it's still on me. There's asking me to unmute or stay muted.
Margot, are you there? She's unmuted, but I don't hear anything. Margot, you may need to unmute on your side. Would you like me to go to the next public comment? Oh, there she is. Margot?
Yeah, because if not, we can always come back to her. I mean, you know, it's a technical issue.
Actually, it looks like she dropped off, so.
So she may have hung up and tried to reconnect. So if you want to go ahead and move on to the next one.
Okay.
And then let us know when she gets back on.
Okay. The next public comment is from Barbara Woods.
Hi, my name is Barbara Woods and I'm currently serving as a third grade teacher at Valley Oak School. And I'd just like to make a few comments and a couple of questions regarding reopening and just for factors for you to just have in mind. As you're thinking about moving us forward in that way. First of all, my question is, there's new mask information out that's suggesting. That it is better if we wear two layers of masks, one being a surgical mask and the other one being a cloth over that. And so, and that's not just for medical providers, but for all people from what I've been able to read in the last couple of days. So I just want us to think about what does that mean for teachers if we're in the classroom? If that, if we can have, if we could, there's can be some source for surgical masks. I know there's been a shortage in the past. But perhaps that is a little bit different now so that we can have those. And of course, if we're providing our own cloth masks, we would do that. So I just want us to keep that in mind, considering the variances that are in the. Viruses that are coming out that are making them more infectious. Then also, I'd just like you to be aware that currently what is going on in some of our classrooms online is, I'm just gonna talk to you about my team. So you have some on the ground information. All of us have have had several students who have, who have had COVID. Several parents who are isolating in their bedrooms. So that they can try to prevent COVID from happening to their students or to their children. And we just know that if that's happened while we're online teaching, when we get in person, we need to just be aware. That's a very real possibility for human cost. So if one team of four teachers is seen as in their classroom, then I think it's probably likely throughout the district. It's just quiet because we're very confidential about it. And in saying this, I'm not, I would never say things. It just comes out from students or from parents. So just to know that we have quite a bit of COVID action going on in our community that is not being necessarily reported in any way. So it brings up forefront the likelihood of that human. So it brings up forefront the likelihood of that human cost of opening. So we just need to be very careful. We'd also like you to know that there's a big contrast in instructional minutes. There's, even though this is a very large variance, I'm just going to talk about what I know about. Right now, we have at least three and a half to four and sometimes longer of nearly daily instructional minutes with all of our students.
Seconds.
Some of us are choosing for that. In addition, we're doing a small group instruction in the afternoons for our students who have different needs. And that goes way beyond those minutes and we're available for students and parents assistance in the afternoons. When we go to the A M P M model, we will not be available for more than two and a half hours of instruction per cohort. So we're reducing our instruction almost by half. And the last thing is, many of us have nearly one hundred percent attendance now. We have parents that are expressing concerns about how they're going to be able to manage to have their children get to and from school and have care at home, somebody at home for when they arrived in the middle of day. So just all these concerns are something I'd like you to be aware of. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you.
Confirmation that Margot Aguirre would like to comment.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, yes, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Fantastic. Sorry about that technology, right? We all experience it on a daily basis. This is things that our children go through. Um I didn't come prepared with um a grand speech or statistical facts or any of those types of things. I just came to speak passionately about, you know, the kids and what's going on. And um thankfully, uh the six children that we do have, we have two left, one in high school and one in junior high. So I want to speak specifically, obviously, about the eighth grader. This is the elementary school board meeting. And um, you know, she's a bright student, but she's already naturally an introvert, introvert by nature. And just with her being home for almost a year, it's really cultivating um an unhealthy balance, I want to say for her directly, because she's been more of a hermit than she ever was before. And so trying to get her to be healthy and active and interactive was already a bit of a struggle beforehand, but it's really been amplified over this past year. And um in speaking with her friends and their parents, their, her friends' parents and hearing the same type of concerns that they're having with their children, it's alarming. And I just kind of feel like at what point are we going to take the Band-Aid, just rip it off and roll with it and allow the students and the teachers that want to go back, go back? The ones that want to stay at home and stay, it stay safe in their own space, be able to do that, because there's teachers that are going to want that too. Um and on the only reason why realistically for me, it's going to be able to work is because I'm one of the fortunate ones that get to stay at home and work from home. So I'm going to be able to work with any schedule that you guys put out, because that's how desperately I want my kid to go back to school. But it's unrealistic for parents to be able to do the two, three hours a day. I just think it's an unreal expectation. And why don't we just go back full-time, five days a week, full hours? And is anyone talking to Oakview, they're a neighboring school right there on Collier in Jayhaunt? Is anyone talking to that principal? Is anyone talking to that staff, seeing how things are going? Because they've been rolling this whole school year and they've been fine. I've I've spoken to teachers over there. And um I just feel like we need to shift out of this fear living and get back on with it. And I don't know what we're going to do if we never get into the right tier. And is this how we're going to continue to function normally going forward? I just feel like it's unrealistic. And I want, obviously, no one to be sick and be safe and all those things. Those things go without saying. But at some point, we just need to get back to it and get some normalcy for everyone involved, especially the students and the teachers and the faculty and the parents. That's all.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening. I'm a special ed teacher at Valley Oaks Elementary School. And I just briefly wanted to just talk, um I've been doing the small cohort since October. And I have about ten students in my classroom and four via Zoom. So I've been doing the hybrid way of teaching. And it's really not that scary. It's really not that difficult. My students have been thriving being in the class with me. I've seen a lot more success when it comes to the assignments. We've had no shutdowns in my classroom due to COVID. We've just taken all the precautionary safety measures and followed all the CDC guidelines. And um I would like to see my own kids be able to go back to school, because I do have my own two children, because I've seen that it's working. And it's really just necessary for these kids to get back in the class. I know people are worried that they're not going to have their normal socialization and stuff, but they do. They don't care about that. They just want to be there with their teachers and their peers versus being on a computer screen all day long. So I just really think we need to start getting back to that idea of going back to school, even if it is smaller class sizes and following those CDC guidelines. That's it. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
We do have one more speaker request.
No need to apologize. Who is it?
Sarah Murray.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Sarah. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. I'm back. How you guys doing? All right. Um I just have two, I have a comment and then a question that is been on my mind. Um I'm going to bounce off Tiffany a little bit. I saw, I started small core, I can't even talk, sorry, a small cohort. And I have about ten or eleven kids on campus. Love it, love it, love it. I even asked them today. I said, hey, guys, are you happy, even though you're only here for two hours a day, even though you have to wear a mask and six and sit six feet apart? I said, are you guys really happy to be here? Like, would you rather be here than in your own house? And they're like, you wouldn't imagine the stuff that came out of their mouth. They said, absolutely. They said, I don't have to listen to my parents fighting. I don't have to help my siblings when I'm trying to do my own thing. Like, just, it was amazing. And I said, I was just checking, because I know you would give me an honest answer. But I love it. Um it's so important. And I'm so glad we have opportunity to bring the smaller cohort on campus. I am very grateful for that. Um and then my only question that I think really, really needs to be figured out soon is what are we going to do with the kids who have never, pretty much never been on school, on Zoom, doing their work? No matter if a resource officer went out, no matter if, you know, admin calls, we have uh kids with zero percent on all grade levels. We have kids that shown up to one Zoom. I mean, we're on month ten of this. And obviously, in my mind, uh they shouldn't be moving on to the next grade level. They have no knowledge of the current grade level happening this school year at all. But that's something we really need to look into. Maybe there's not a lot of those kids, but there's definitely some of those kids. And for whatever reason, I don't know, they are not there and they haven't been learning at all or producing at all. So that really, really needs to be thought about, um especially as we enter, you know, third and fourth trimester. Um and some of these kids, we may never see until we physically go back to school full-time. I don't know. But that's just a question I think that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later, in my personal opinion. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Silver, we do receive one more request for public comment.
Okay, who is it?
Martha Vilma.
Okay.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Martha.
I did have a couple of things to address. As a parent and a an instructional assistant in the um school district working at Valley Oaks, I personally have seen that um my students are finally at a good point. And we are, it took a long time to get there, but they are finally engaging and doing well. I'm finding that most of them love it. Um as a parent, my kids are doing great. One of mine went from failing a lot of classes last year to A's this year. And I have a top dog. And then I have one that's still struggling a little bit, but he's always struggled before. So it's just like you guys said about, you know, the ones that are struggling before do struggle now. And I did want to just bring a couple of things that have come up recently to your attention. We had a local, what kind of local incident in Roseville High where they had sixty-plus cases over a three-month period. You know, when something like that happens, then, you know, that affects a lot of classrooms, a lot of teachers, a lot of families. And that is still a big concern, along with a new report that just came out today regarding Miss C. The condition that they're finding in young kids especially, um after having COVID. There are some kids that never even knew that they had it because they were asymptomatic, but then developed the Miss C symptoms later, four to six weeks after having that COVID that they didn't even know they had. During that time, they spread it, and then now they're left with some permanent damage. So there's a lot of things to consider and a lot of new stuff coming out with kids, with young kids. I understand that there is um a monetary incentive to open. And I know that there are kids and parents that want to go back. But for those of us that don't, I really do ask that full distance learning continue to be an option. And there's some, I know some talk about maybe Glee reopening, um to be able to sign up for that. I'm sorry, what was that?
Thirty, thirty seconds, please.
Okay, um so aside from the option to sign up for Glee, and that sounds like it might be only if space is available, I just want the consideration of full distance learning to continue to be an option um for us educators and parents who don't necessarily want to go back. Thank you.
Do you thank you, Martha? Kawhi?
There are no further requests for public comment. However, I do have a question in the Q and A related to part of the reopening report by Donna Whitlock. Um would you like to hear the question?
Sure, if it's related to the report, I think now it would be appropriate to read it now.
The two-week teacher notice that you reported um when we opened in red here, does that translate into three weeks in red before opening?
No, and um I will defer actually to Claudia D'Orangiano. Working, she works very closely with um with COVID and with the cases. As far as I understand it, it is just two weeks. Cleo?
Based on our un- our understanding, we would need to be in red for two weeks. So once we are in red for that first week, then that's the first week when we would notify teachers that follow it or two weeks from then, we would open that. So two weeks in red, then we open.
And and if I could share this, is, and this is where it's um new information, is the county public health document talks about red tier and then you have five days. And so the the aspect of of what we need to look at uh in our districts is we do have a model for reopening in red. And we have agreements with both unions. And there is agreement language that states that we will let our teachers union know two weeks before the opening day. And both of our unions have prepared, you know, the work that we've done to reopen on red. But again, there are certain processes of notifying when we plan to do that. We're not in red yet. But it, but we do have two weeks to let them know prior to opening.
So maybe just to clarify, we would be, like if we went red, we're there for a week, so that's one week, and then we give the teachers two weeks.
No, we give teachers notice that first week.
So that first day that we're in red? Okay, I think that's what they were trying to say. Is it going to be two weeks or is it three, because you're doing one full week in red?
So for example.
It used to seem like three would be three weeks. It seemed like you'd have two weeks of red and then it's like, hey, we're going to let the teachers know they have a week to get ready. That's what it seemed like.
Yeah, well, county, county public health, see, this is where there there was guidance that came out in November. It was after we had our agreement that stated that um once the county was in red, then, and then you have two weeks in red, you could reopen. So again, this is where there is now new guidance that shortens that period. But again, we're working with what the model that we have within our district and the agreements that we have with our unions at that, at this point. So that's, there's that's two weeks of letting our union know before we would, when we're in red.
So for example, if we were to turn red on February first, we would be able to open up for in-person instruction by February fifteenth, or actually a Tuesday would be February sixteenth.
So that first day that we go red, we'll give the teachers their heads up.
Thank you, Cleo.
And keep in mind, part of that is to allow teachers time for them to pivot to uh in-person instruction. It's, as I already mentioned, it, they're doing a phenomenal job, but it's not easy. So then they need notice to plan again. Most of our teachers, I would say, plan two weeks in advance. They already plan this week and they're planning next week. So that's where the two weeks kind of comes into play, because they are planning two weeks in advance.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much. Um any further public comment?
No, I have other questions, however, I'll work for them to the district.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um also, thank you to everybody who called in and uh spoke with us tonight. Obviously, feedback from all of our stakeholders is extremely important. And it is highly valued, you know, you know, amongst the board. It really does help us throughout this process. So thank you for even uh being here tonight, sitting with us and and giving us your input. We really do appreciate that. So the next item would be uh Williams uniform complaint process, quarterly report.
Yes, yes. So again, we have areas that we do report on a quarterly basis. If there are complaints pertaining to textbooks, school facilities, and misassignment of teachers, we have no complaints. And that's the report.
Okay, now on to routine matters, new business. So first item, uh item two zero two point one five three, consent calendar. First, any questions, comments, concerns regarding the consent calendar? No? Item D, personnel, uh Dr. Shara, any comments on personnel?
I I do not have any on personnel, but I do on donations.
Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll move on to donations.
All right, we do have a donation. Uh Stephen and Elizabeth Creason donated school, school supplies for Greer Elementary valued at three hundred dollars.
Thank you very much, Stephen and Elizabeth Creason. So I'm assuming members of uh of the community?
And I I I would think so. They could be parents at the school, but I'm not sure.
All right, well, that's, thank you very much. All right, further action items. Next item will be item two zero two point one five five. And that is board consideration of approval of the twenty twenty twenty-one school accountability report cards, SART for Lake Canyon Elementary, Marengo Ranch Elementary, River Oaks Elementary, McCaffrey Middle School, Valley Oaks Elementary, and Vernon E. Gure Elementary.
You know what? We're almost there. But and I may make sure, did we, I don't think we, we had a motion on the consent calendar yet.
You're right.
So, but what's okay, because we're we're almost there. So um what do you think?
So I guess I should move back and ask for a motion there, because we covered donations. So yes, let me recap. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, item two zero two point one five three?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thanks for bailing me out, Gracie.
You're welcome.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Malson to approve the consent calendar, seconded by Tom Silva. Wes Cable? Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey McBoy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you very much. Now we can move on to item two zero two point one five five. Do I need to read it again? Can we just talk about the SARC here?
These are, this is for our school accountability report cards for all of our elementary schools and McCaffrey Middle School. The SARCs, as they're called, they're enacted under Proposition ninety-eight. And it's established that schools will update their school accountability report cards annually. And the updates have also, they have site-specific information that our principals have put in there along with data that you've seen that's been downloaded from the California Department of Education. And additionally, the, the data that you see in there, some of it is from two thousand nineteen twenty. And then some of the data is current from two thousand twenty twenty-one. I wanted to bring to your attention the facility inspection tool that's included in the SARCs annually. I noticed, you know, they're quite lengthy. There's quite several pages. What's important to know, this year they were completed in October two thousand twenty. Typically, they're, they were completed in the spring. As soon as we received those fit reports, Lois worked with maintenance, custodians, and site administrators. They receive copies. And so that long list that you see in each of the school accountability report cards, they get busy and they work throughout the year to, to repair any of the deficiencies that you see. And I noticed that several of our schools did reach the good, can do, two of them.
They did.
Return to good this year. Any other, anything you'd like to us point out on the fit reports, highlight?
No, maybe just two of our school sites did move to good. And so that was, that's awesome. You need to be at ninety percent overall to get a good rating. All of our school sites made improvement in their percentage. But it's the first time since two thousand fifteen that we have schools in good status. So that's Lake Canyon and Marengo moved to good.
Probably due to the extensive work that we've done.
Maintenance and custodians, everybody's working on it. So, yeah, I've already met with over half the staff at the sites. We'll finish up next week to go over this list and strategize what we're going to do next. So hopefully more will be good next year.
I'm curious, who actually conducts the fit?
We hire a state inspector.
The state inspector, okay, okay. And I'm just curious, cause I mean, I, you know, I looked through some of these. How do they measure water pressure? Because there's comments in there where they said the, the, the drinking fountain pressure was too high, but the water faucet was too low. And I'm, I'm like, okay, I mean, I'm assuming it's like an industrial hygienist or something. Do they actually measure that? Or do they just like stick their face in front of the drinking fountain?
No, and last year I did block some of the sites. Yes, and, and they do that sometime. He turns on the faucet and if the water is spraying over the sink, then he will say that's an overflow. And, and he gauges if he thinks the, the water is, some of it is suggested, I mean, objective, I mean, it's, but he, you know, I, I think that's one of the areas we have most improvement on is the plumbing, the leaks and things like that. And, you know, it, it might not leak one day and the next day it does, you know, when he's there. And so, yeah, we just have to keep working on it. But he, he goes by the flow and if it's coming out of the sink, then that's too heavy.
Okay, I just, that'll look like a trend throughout all, all of our schools.
I think that's the biggest trend right now. Yeah, it's plumbing.
But it's never just for.
I, you know, I did want to point out that the achievement results that you see on there, it's all N A. That they just goods because there was no aspect, there was no state testing in this last year, two thousand nineteen twenty. That's why that's all blank. The other thing is, is that when approved, these school accountability report cards will be posted on our website in both English and Spanish. Copies, hard copies will be available to our community upon request. Any other questions?
All right then, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one five five, board consideration of approval of twenty nineteen twenty twenty's school accountability report card for all of our schools?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wes Cable to approve item number two zero two one five five, seconded by Casey McBoy.
Hi.
Grace Malson?
Excuse me, just, I apologize.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Let me do that again, hold on a second. I have a motion by Wes Cable to approve item number two zero two one five five, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Casey McBoy?
Aye.
Grace Malson?
Aye.
Tom Silva?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
I'd like to thank our site administrators for preparing these reports.
Excellent job. Okay, next item is two zero two point one five six, board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between G J U E S D and Galt Elementary Facility Association, or excuse me, Faculty Association, G E F A, regarding one-time early retirement incentive program for twenty 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 twenty-one.
Yes, okay, thank you. So G E F A has ratified an agreement for a one-time early retirement incentive program. We are working with PARs, a public agency, Retirement Services, and we'll have more detailed information in the next action item when we talk about the agreement. We do have forty-six teachers that meet the requirements, age, and for their years of participating in either STIRS or CalPERS. In order to afford this program and possibly see a little bit of the savings, we would need ten bargaining unit member teachers or bargaining unit members to participate in this program. The savings is here for you, approximately a hundred thousand savings in one year. Three hundred thousand over three years, possibly three hundred and ninety-one thousand over five years. This savings would fluctuate depending on the replacement of our teachers and where they come in and what salary they come in at, how many years of experience they have. So this is just a, a rough estimate at this time. I do want to know, I saw, I see a typo, this is my fault, under projected fiscal impact for minimum of, it says ten, or I'm sorry, it says twelve. It should be ten teachers right there. It should be ten. And the M O U is correct, the M O U language has ten. That is our, that is our goal with this M O U, that we would need ten teachers to participate. And dates are outlined when teachers would need to submit, or bargaining unit members, not just teachers, would need to submit a letter of retirement, except to retire. There's timelines on rescinding that. It would be effective June thirtieth of this year, twenty twenty. If we don't meet the ten, then they, they can resend. If we meet the ten and we don't resend by the, the deadline, then they can't. And then we do have a PARs representative that will be with us here at the next action item to talk a little bit more about how you afford this program, the seventy percent payout, the agreement with the PARs agency to provide this incentive.
Okay. Any questions on the M O U? All right then. Do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one five six? Board consideration of approval of the memorandum of understanding between G J U E S D and G E F A regarding one-time early retirement incentive for twenty 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 twenty-one. Okay, thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Grace, I'll second it.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two zero two one five six, seconded by Grace Malson. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wes Cable?
Aye.
Casey McBoy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
All right, next item up, two zero two point one five seven, board consideration of approval of resolution number nine, authorizing G J U S D to enter into an agreement with Public Agency Retirement Services to design and administer a supplementary retirement plan for eligible, certificated, non-management employees.
All right, so tonight we have Ryan Nacasio with us from PARs. We partnered with PARs the last few years, last couple times that we have offered this incentive, incentive. He has a short PowerPoint to go over with you and, and share the seventy percent payout that we would be able to offer and any other details. Thank you, Ryan.
Great, well, thank you very much. Again, my name is Ryan Nacasio. I'm a vice president with PARs. Thank you, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Shower. I have a brief presentation to go through. It's about ten slides or, or so. I'll try to go through quickly and if you can ask me a question as we go through. Just kind of an overview of the program, the timeline, et cetera. So just a quick introduction of who PARs is. As mentioned, we've worked with the district in the past, but as our name implies, Public Agency Retirement Services, we work with public agencies consulting and administering retirement programs. On the educational side, we do work with school districts as well as community college, college districts. We also work on the municipality side with cities, counties, special districts. And with the educational side, we are best known for this early retirement incentive where we have worked over thirty years with this type of program, varying size districts throughout the state, big and small, as big as a LA Unified or San Diego Unified, even districts in your county such as a Folsom Cordova, El Grove, Sacramento City, and San Juan. And as mentioned earlier, we did work with the district, the previous two offerings. And just a quick background on the incentive, you know, the idea would be you are encouraging longer-term senior employees generally who are maybe on the higher end of the salary schedule to retire. The replacement of those employees with lower salary than, of employees, or even not replacing them at all, you know, where we look at that compensation differential is where the savings can be achieved. You know, ultimately, we're trying to incentivize enough folks to increase participation in the program. You know, oftentimes districts will look at this as either as a budget savings or to at least break even, you know, potentially as reorganizational tool, or simply just to prevent layoffs or mitigate any potential needs for layoffs. And sort of in this current environment, you know, we've worked with a number of districts who are looking at this as a way to work with their employees, you know, given the challenges of distance learning and what the current environment is with trying to get back into the classroom, et cetera. The process for the incentive would be that the board would approve a resolution this evening, which would open up a contingent enrollment window. It's about forty-five to sixty days enrollment window. During this time, that's when the, the services of PARs will begin, where we will send out enrollment packages to eligible participants. You know, during this time, we will create an online video orientation video that they can watch that will walk them through the enrollment process if they are interested. You know, during this time, we encourage them to speak with their underlying retirement system, STIRS, if they are considering retirement, with their financial advisors, family members, so that they can make a decision that's best for them. We want them to have all the information so that they can make an informed decision. We're not here to persuade or twist arms, but we just want them to have all the information so they can make a decision that's best for them. At the end of that enrollment window, that forty-five to sixty-day enrollment window, we would conduct a fiscal analysis on actual enrollments and provide that analysis to the district, where the district can then evaluate. You know, based on participation, did the program create savings or is there a cost and it doesn't make sense to move forward with the program or not? So that's sort of the district's discretion to evaluate. If the results are achieved in their savings, the district would move forward and approve the plan. If, if, for whatever reason, if maybe enrollment was low or didn't achieve savings and there's a cost, the district could then also decide to cancel the program. The plan moves forward, folks would resign at the end of the school year. If it's canceled, offers rescinded. And the structure of the program is through the Internal Revenue Code, Section four oh three B, tax sheltered annuity program, where it, a spend amount is used or provided by the district. In this case, seventy percent of their final salary is used to purchase an annuity. This is paid out over five years. The annuity is provided by insurance company, Pacific Life Insurance. And this annuity provides fourteen different benefit options and flexible options, I guess, for receiving that benefit to the participant. From the district standpoint, this is a defined cost of seventy percent of their final salary. There's no additional contributions. In the event, let's say the participant lives for thirty or forty years beyond, you know, what the, the district has contributed, that's sort of the and mortality risk borne by the insurance company. As I mentioned, Pacific Life Insurance Company is the annuity provider. We, PARs does not receive any compensation or commissions from Pacific Life Insurance Company. Our association with them is strictly based on their strong financial ratings and their ability to service the annuity. Part of PARs is due diligence and working with Pacific Life Insurance Companies, ensuring that they maintain their strong financial ratings, and we do that on an annual basis. And the good news with Pacific Life is that brand name recognition, where most folks have either heard of Pacific Life Insurance or familiar or have seen their commercials with the wells, et cetera. As I mentioned, the annuity would provide fourteen different benefit options to the participant, to the eligible participants. They range from lifetime payments to a joint survivor, as well as higher fixed term monthly payments that sort of paid out over a shorter period of time. These are all actuarially equivalent from the participant's standpoint. So they're sort of like no better or worse, right or wrong benefit selection. And that's really up to the participant to decide, you know, which benefit option makes the most sense for their specific situation. And then this next slide is just a sample benefit illustration of what that would look like, taking sort of the average person from the group where their final salary is about eighty-eight thousand. If the plan were to be offered, each eligible participant would receive a customized benefit illustration based upon their specific age and salary. But just to show you sort of like what those benefits would look like, we put this into a, a sample benefit illustration where, you know, if they wanted to choose a lifetime option, one, it's looking at about two hundred eighteen dollars for their life. Joint Survivor, someone of the same age is about a hundred eighty-seven dollars. Options five through nine, these are your higher fixed term payments paid out over, in the case of option five, sixty monthly payments, so that's about a thousand dollars paid out. And five through nine have these asterisks because these are eligible to be rolled over either to an IRA or other tax-qualified plan. So just additional tax-saving opportunities for the participant, and this is simply an IRS rule because it's paid out under ten years. And, you know, part of the implementation of the incentive program is the communication process with the employee. And that's where PARs would come in and relieve this administrative burden from the district. As I mentioned, if the resolution is adopted this evening, our services would begin where we would create customized enrollment packets for all eligible participants. Within their packet, they would receive- Within their packet, they would receive that customized benefit illustration based on their specific age and salary as well as the necessary enrollment forms. Part of our communication and education process for the employees, creating a customized orientation video that will be available to their viewing, sort of an on-demand video. Prior to sort of the current environment with the pandemic, we would generally come out to the district and meet with your employees in a group orientation setting, but given the current environment and the banning of sort of group large meetings, we've transitioned to this orientation video that they have available at their disposal. And we've had great success with that. Folks can watch it over and over and at their leisure. If they have any specific questions, they can always contact us through our toll-free enrollment line, and our representatives can walk them through any questions or even walk them through the video and answer any questions in my panel. And from the district's standpoint, and what we do with PARZ is we offer sort of the complimentary analysis upfront to determine, you know, what would that potential fiscal impact be to the district if a incentive is offered? You know, we're ultimately, we are sort of looking at that compensation differential between the retiring employee and the replacement employee, but part of the overall analysis or model is sort of looking at all of the costs that are going into the program. So, you know, the cost of the incentive itself, that 70% of final salary of retirement healthcare costs, folks are transitioning to retiree status, cost of natural attrition, meaning that folks would have left on their own without the incentive, so we don't take credit for that, as well as future loss of natural attrition, meaning folks that would have retired in the next two, three, or four years, you know, we may simply be speeding up their departure from the district. And then the last component, any savings due to non-replacements. So if the district is in a position to not replace one of these retiring positions as a result of the incentive, that can be additional savings to the district. And from that, we determine, is there an overall net savings or cost associated with the program? So looking at sort of the demographics of your group for your certified non-managed folks, we identified 46 eligible folks that would be eligible based on the level of benefit and looking at the demographics with the age, we would project 10 would take the program. So that's sort of this top section here. And then the fiscal impact is below where if the district had 10 retirements or folks that participated in the plan and replaced all 10 of those positions, you know, what would that impact look like where we're showing about 112,000 projected savings in the first year, about 270,000 cumulative over three years, and about 350,000 cumulative over five years? And sort of that last component from that model that I showed in the previous slide, it was that there can be additional savings if the district is in a position to not replace, you know, some of these positions. This is sort of the, if the district had 10 takers and you replace all 10 of those positions, this would be the impact to the district. And then this last slide here is just the proposed timeline where tonight, if the board adopts the resolution, that would sort of start the enrollment process or the enrollment window would open up shortly thereafter with enrollment packets being mailed out to all eligible folks. At the same time, our online orientation meeting in the form of a web recording would be posted and available for their viewing. And then during this enrollment window, again, you know, this is where we encourage them to speak with their financial advisors, family members, underlying retirement system of STIRS, if they're considering retirement, to determine whether this program is in their best interest and makes sense. We're proposing an enrollment window closing March 26. At that time, we would know exactly who enrolled in the program, and we would provide an analysis to the district, you know, based on actual enrollments because our projections from the previous slide is based on just sort of the average agent salary of the group. But then we would know with the enrollment window closing who actually is participating in the program. At that point, the district can then determine or evaluate, you know, did the incentive meet its fiscal and operational goals? You know, we were projecting 10. Ultimately, that's the discretion for the district, you know, because you could potentially have nine participants and they can be, you could have the same result based on actual participation, what their salaries are, etc. So that would be something for the district to evaluate. If the district reaches their goal, you'd announce the plan going forward shortly thereafter. Employees would resign from the school district at the end of the school year on or before June 30, and their first benefit would start August 1st. So that concludes my presentation. I wanted to pause and leave some time for any questions.
Did you say the closing date, March 26?
March 26, yes.
Yeah.
I have no questions. Any questions? No, it was an excellent presentation. I think you pretty much covered everything. It was a great explanation. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. So then do I have a motion to approve item 202.157, board consideration of approval of resolution number nine, authorizing DJ UASD to enter into an agreement with Public Agency Retirement Services to design and administer a supplementary retirement plan for eligible, certificated, non-management employees. Do I have a motion? Casey?
I make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Tracy, second?
Thank you, I have a motion by Casey Ravoroy to approve item number 202157, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Grace Smallson?
Aye.
Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Tom Sova?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item 202.158, board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between the Galt Elementary Faculty Association, GFA, and DJ UASD regarding learning continuity professional growth package.
Okay, as we're looking at reopening in a time of transition and moving from distance learning to blended learning and preparing for anything and everything, providing resources for our teachers so that they can effectively learn how to do that even better than what they're doing with distance learning when they come back and are participating in blended learning and possibly continuing to serve some students. We needed to look at a way of being able to support professional growth along with looking for some teachers that were willing to work on best practices of children that would not be returning to their classrooms. So we found a way to work together with our teachers' unions so that we could develop a win-win to do that, and that's what this MOU represents. Today, Mindo and Lois Yott facilitated a session on the technology tools that would be a part of teachers participating in this. We had, what, over 40, was it close to 50 teachers after school today that were a part, very interested in this. I know that with the surveying that was done prior to the ratification that we do have strong teacher interest for being a part of this. And I know, and our director, Prichnam Claudia del Toro Agüiano, I know that you talked about the importance of teachers learning from each other and sharing best practices. Or anything you'd like to share about this MOU and the promise of this?
Yes. 2.3.2 talks about adjunct duty for ongoing support. And that thought would be that these teachers that are using these additional tools, that once a month we would meet, again, more like a network, not necessarily with a set agenda, but come together to share best practices, how we're using the tool, how to do work, how to use them in and out. So that would be voluntary, but again, that's again to support that collaboration between the great teachers that you have in the district.
And again, the funding for this, Lois Yott, would come, how are we paying for these technology tools and incentives for that time and workload to do this?
We've used the federal stimulus funds and would continue emergency funds.
So we're excited about this MOU and just want to recognize GFA's leadership again for working with management to come up with this, and GFA has ratified this with membership. So we're bringing it to you for your consideration to see if you can take action.
And to be clear, this is open to all members of the faculty? I mean, can you clarify that on each side that I'm understanding? Because you said you have interest so far from about 15 minutes.
We do, we have 81 teachers that have signed up. We first opened it up to teachers that had Glee 2.0 students, and they were going through, or sorry. We first opened it up to teachers that had students that were going to stay on distance learning so they could zoom in the classroom with those students. But what ended up happening was it kind of expanded and also looking at using the camera and the zooming to support mainstream into regular education classrooms. And so we really ended up opening it up to any teacher. And so some of the teachers on the list or that have signed up for this might not have any students that are distance learning, but they want to.
But most of them do.
Most of them do. Over 60 do. Most of them do. But we have a total, the deadline was Monday to sign up, and we have 81 teachers that have signed up.
Okay, so after the deadline, they don't have the opportunity to sign up or?
I mean, we probably can, I mean, we probably can, but that's the deadline we use to know how many cameras we need to plan for installation.
To resource it, okay.
Yeah, the first 81 will be the priority.
And we're also trying to finalize decisions about placements of children in terms of with their current grade level, with a new Glee 2.0 teacher and some other human resources things that we need to work out, which is a part of this agreement too, trying to think about all of those complexities in a pandemic so that we can support growing and learning together, support continuity of children with teachers where that can work, but provide opportunities for learn, learning new tools that will really help in the future and in the short term too.
Question on the compensation, I'm looking at 3.2. It says like $4 stipend for each student. Or exactly?
That is $400 per student that's in distance learning, that will stay in distance learning.
Isn't that the same below then, right? For seventh, eighth grade, 100?
Yes, 100 per the core subject. But those are for students, not their whole class, but for the students that they would be zooming with because they're at home distance learning.
So yep, there's compensation incentive and there are resources. Training and again, best practices that, Cleo, with the monthly meetings that you're talking about, I think it's going to be so helpful for us, not only this school year, but in the future too.
Sounds like we're really taking advantage of all this technology. I mean, I think that's excellent that we have this opportunity and we're able to work this out. Any other questions, concerns? Nope? Then that case, do I have a motion to approve item 202.158?
I'll make a motion to approve 202.158.
Thank you, Grace.
I'll second.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you, I have a motion from Grace Smallson to approve item number 202158, seconded by Wes Cable. Tom Sova?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Ravoroy?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Okay, next item, 202.159, and that is board consideration of approval of addendum COVID-19 reopening memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the California School Employees Association and its Gulf chapter number 362, CSEA, and DJ UASD regarding widespread purple tier telework scheduling and essential services.
Okay, so we have another MOU, and this applies only when we're in the purple tier. But we do have some classified positions that are able to do their services from home. And if that's the case and it does not conflict with what's needed to do with cohorts or office operations or other operations, then we, then, oh, yeah, tap it, please. Hit cancel. Thank you. Thanks for catching that, so we didn't lose that.
We're losing it.
Yeah, yeah. So, so again, we do have, there are positions at our schools and in the district office that when we're in the purple tier could support more of a flexible schedule. But again, not at the expense of services for children and families as well. So what this does is it allows somewhat flexibility to make that happen and not necessarily where it looks the same at every school location. Because some schools may provide more of certain services than other schools, so, or may happen more in the morning than the afternoon. So we felt that we could agree upon making this work together with CSEA and just again, provide that flexibility when there is a purple, when we're in the purple tier. That, this agreement was ratified by CSEA, and if you turn to Lois or Donna, anything else that you'd like to add on this?
I think it's flexible and it changes based on need, and it's different at every site. So. Still have to get the work done, still have to serve the students, so it's, I think that's the biggest thing that it's, it looks different at every site.
And this, and this again, part of the, again, the reason that is the district, we are looking at flex schedules depending on pandemic conditions, does have to do with safety and following precautions, but also just sometimes just scheduling that could make it that much safer depending on what's needed.
I appreciate we're all working together to be flexible. I think that's excellent. Any questions, comments?
I do. Hi, this is Grace. So when we were in like the stay-at-home order that we just got out of a few weeks ago, then does this MOU not apply?
It applies in purple, so even, even though we're not in deep purple right now, it still applies while in purple.
And I think that administrators at the sites, especially in our offices, were somewhat flexible even before bringing the MOU, that there were ways that they were being able to flex when we were in our deep purple tier.
But I think part of the challenge was that it was just hard for it to look the same at every school. And so that's the flexibility that we appreciated as we worked with CSEA to say that if we were able to agree upon this, and we need to understand that it could not look the same, including in our district office, because just, there are just differences in terms of what needs to get done, with who, and whether it can be done remotely or not.
So to clarify, so as if we go back to the stay-at-home order, we're going to, we are going to consider it that we are in purple, even though the county could be in orange. This wasn't, when he gave the stay-at-home orders, wasn't there some counties that were in orange?
Well, if it, again, this is about our county, so if we're in purple as a county, it would apply. But again, and again, not just deep purple.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, if not, do I have a motion to approve item 202.159?
I made a motion.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, I have a motion by Wes Cable to approve item number 202159, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Sova?
Aye.
Grace Smallson?
Hi.
Casey Ravoroy?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Item two zero two point one six zero. Board consideration of approval of addendum memorandum of understanding MOU. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one COVID response between the California School Employees Association. And its Gulf chapter number three six two, CSEA and the GJ UESD regarding transportation procedures.
So due to the school closure, bus driver hours have been affected and so. The process for them to bid on routes and for hours. Has been changed. And so we wanted to get an MOU in place. That would give drivers a consistent schedule. They're still receiving their same contracted hours, but the shifts are different now. Because we're not transporting the amount of students. And so basically what this MOU does, it outlines that the drivers will bid on established shifts. Based on seniority. That the drivers will be on call during their established shifts. So they know when. You know, if they're contracted five hours, they have a five hour shift and they know that they're on call during that time if they're at home. They did not need to come in and drive. And that this MOU does allow, it allows us to expand hours or shifts if we bring back more students in small cohorts. Or when we come back to the AMP model. And there's no fiscal impact.
Are are we shortening the bus drivers or are we?
We're not. We're fully staffed right now.
Was that, and is that both districts in terms of?
Yes, both districts were were fully staffed.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment. You know, our. Teachers and our staff on on our campuses and through distance learning have been absolutely phenomenal. But I just want to thank our transportation and our drivers because they're transporting meals to students. So they're transporting students to the schools still. And I really appreciate all their work. I see them in the morning getting in their buses. I see them down my street. And so I just want to thank them for working through this in these conditions with. And so transporting our kids and getting meals out to our families.
Thank you for pointing that out, Grace. Any other comments? If not, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one six zero?
I'll make a motion to approve item two zero two point one six zero.
Thank you, Gracie.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. It's getting like this. Casey, thank you for for the second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Mollson to approve item number two zero two one six zero, seconded by Casey Rabboy. Tom Sova?
Hi.
Wesley Cable?
Hi.
Tracy Skinner?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Next item is two zero two point one six one, board consideration of approval. Of memorandum of understanding MOU between the California School Employees Association. And it's called chapter three six two, CSEA. And the GJ UESD regarding twenty twenty one minimum wage increase.
This has to be the record of MOUs in a board packet. But this MOU is to comply with law. Minimum wage did increase January first, fourteen dollars per hour. And so we did. We had about thirteen employees that were not making fourteen dollars an hour and so automatically moved them up. Effective January one to the fourteen dollars. And so this is just a. An MOU to approve that and it will go to fifteen dollars an hour a year from now. The fiscal impact is approximately ten thousand dollars.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions on that? Okay, um. I'll I'll move to approve item two zero two point one six one. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Sova to approve item number two zero two one six one, seconded by Casey Rabboy. Wes Cable?
Hi.
Grace Mollson?
Hi.
Tracy Skinner?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
Okay, next item, two zero two point one six two. It is the first reading of board policy slash administrative regulation six one seven three, education for homeless children.
Okay, when I submitted our consolidated application in the spring. And that's for, that's the application we submit annually for our federal funding title one, title two, title three, title four. They found that our homeless education board policy had been approved before two thousand sixteen. And there's been quite a few changes, the McKinney Vento Homeless Assistant Act. Which drives a lot of the the guidelines for the home for homeless education. It was reauthorized by the ESA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And it required, it's a lot more requirements and procedures. So. We wanted to take this opportunity to revise our current policy. We sent this to Grace Mollson, who is a representative from the board and she reviewed it before coming, going into the board packet. I wanted to say that in the administrative regulation, I didn't complete the part that had our. Who is our district liaison for homeless youth. And that is Sophie Lord. She's our licensed school social worker at Greer Elementary School. For as long as I, you know, I think in at least the last four or five years, she's been our liaison and she works with our other social workers and. With our county office of education, making sure that they participate in the professional development and that we are in compliance with all of the. The policies and guidelines. So again, this is the first reading. There's any questions?
I see a lot of changes.
A lot of red, huh? Yes. You know, it's just notable, I just, well, I just will let you know that. We already have, it requires us to, we we need to ask for that that type of information. And it's already has been for the last at least four to five years. It's already been a question on our registration. So a lot of these areas we're already in compliance with. We just didn't have the updated work policy to go along with it. So I think that's important to note too.
So Gracie, what did you think when you reviewed it? Or any questions or comments on that?
No, it, I know, I thought it was very well written and a lot of red, but you know, things change over time. And unfortunately, just in general, across California homelessness is an issue. So I'm glad that there's a lot of red in here where there's new policy in place and. Things have changed.
Again, the most of the suggestions in the red that came from the California School Boards Association. They regularly update us and provide us with the information to update our board policies.
Great.
And we'll bring them back next month for you.
Thank you. And now item two zero two point one six three, board consideration of approval of twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar.
Thank you. So in collaboration with GFA and consultation with CSEA. A calendar for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year has been drafted for you review. The tentative calendar has been approved by GFA union membership. The calendar is August nineteenth as the first day of school. June ninth as the last day of school. We have three professional development days. Within the student contact time calendar. We have two minimum days for progress monitoring in October. We have five minimum days for parent conferences that typically happen. Either at the end of November or in December. The calendar also reflects two new teacher training days. And three professional development days for all teachers, all taking place before the first day of school. That is something that happens every year. Wanted you to know that the placement of the two professional development days that take place in October and in March, so October eleventh. And March seventh. And the placement of the February holidays. Reflect a desire for us to best align with the high school districts. A twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar. So we we did our best to align with the high school. We obtained input from GFA and CSEA and we have this for you. Review and we are asking for approval.
I always like the holiday, spring break is in April.
And I appreciate obviously the coordination with the high school and one of us have children in both districts. And and just that that is just so helpful to to have them. On spring break at the same time. So I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments?
But I should know the answer to this because I've had how many, what, seven spring breaks? Are they normally off the Monday after? On spring break or is that new?
It's new for the high school. We've always had it. So the high school's also trying to align.
Okay, I always thought it was just a week, but it's fine because I don't work Mondays. So I just don't pay attention. Okay. I always thought it was five days.
Okay, clarify, it's the first time that I've noticed it, Gracie. So maybe the high school has always had it, but this is the first year that I've noticed. They have the Monday off.
Okay, oh, because this is the first time I've noticed it's been six days spring break and so just the five. Normally it's Monday to Friday. I've never noticed the following Monday.
Yeah, for us, it's been six days for a while, but it's the first time I've noticed it for the high school for the coming year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then, do I have a motion to approve item two zero two point one six three?
I move.
Casey, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tracy, thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Rabboy to approve item number two zero two one six three, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Sova?
Hi.
Wesley Cable?
Hi.
Grace Mollson?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes five zero.
So next item, public comments. Do we have any additional public comments? Brian was not on the agenda.
We do not.
All right. Well, in that case, thank you very much. Again, thank you, everybody for, you know, committing the time and being here this evening. I, you know. I appreciate it. I think we're all here for the right reasons. So I appreciate everybody, you know, those at home that stuck with us for this whole meeting. So thank you, everybody, and this meeting is now adjourned.